So it is now seven oh two. It's interesting meeting this late since we usually have been meeting at four o'clock recently, but it is March eighteenth twenty twenty one. I'm gonna call this Lacey City Council meeting to order and we'll start off, we always do with a pledge of allegiance. Hi, pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty.
Justice for all.
Well, it's good to see everyone. We do have an agenda and consent agenda items. I don't think anything's changed from that published agenda, so can I get? Motion to approve.
I'd move this.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve today's agenda and consent agenda items. Is there any discussion? And seeing none, all in favor of the motion signified by saying aye.
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 Is there any opposed? Then that motion carries. We have adopted the agenda and consent agenda. Then first up on our adopted agenda is a public comment on items not on the agenda. We have, it looks like three written comments that will be a part of our testimony or a part of this going forward. But we also have several people who've signed up today. And we will start that process. Hopefully, the first person is ready to go. It's Augustine Dalton. Augustine. There you go. Can you unmute yourself?
Hey, how am I?
There you go.
All right, so see if I can get to some visual components as well. There, now we're cooking with gas. Looks good.
Great. Introduce yourself and please keep your comments about three minutes.
Of course. My name is Augustine Dalton. I am an e-commerce worker at the Lacey Fred Meyer. Not too long ago, I attended a meeting identical to this one and encourage you to support hazard pay for grocery workers. Whoa, what news do I bring? What do I have to say tonight that's so radically different from last time? Well, therein lies the rub, I suppose. Nothing has really changed. My hardworking associates, employees of good moral character, continue to fall ill from the virus as stores take few or no precautions to enforce mask usage or social distancing. Aggression from customers who refuse to wear masks is still a constant. This past Sunday, for example, we had an armed drunkard in our parking lot frightening other customers and forcing an abundance of our employees into lockdown at their own jobs. This past summer, if you'll recall, saw similar incidents at the Tumwater store. A public space as mundane and ostensibly innocuous as a grocery store chain is becoming a danger zone. But should we be surprised? The public is being inundated with misinformation, fake news, my friends, that would have you to believe that instituting hazard pay would be the path to financial ruin. And they cling to the tired examples of, what about Burian? What about Seattle? Those QFC stores that closed, wasn't that because of the, oh dear, Mike? Can you still hear me? Everything good? I just heard a noise.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, everything's still good. Okay. Sorry about that little hiccup, friends. Well, people, people point to Burian and Seattle as examples of, oh, well, isn't this the, the problem with giving our employees hazard pay in these grocery chains? The problem is, this is a falsehood. It's a falsehood as foul as the work day is long. Everybody close to the company knows that those QFC stores that closed in Burian, Seattle, wherever it was, those stores were failing anyway. They were sacrificial lands to the ends of nothing less than anti-worker retaliation. Kroger CEOs have seen their profits absolutely soar over the course of this pandemic. They're having a very good time and you're paying for it and I'm paying for it. The simple fact is employees who are better compensated contribute more to the economy in return. When regular people more confidently meet their basic needs of housing, amenities, unexpected automotive and health-related costs, they're simply more likely to spend surplus money on your local restaurants, local tourist attractions, your community, et cetera, et cetera. I hope my testimony and that of others that you may soon hear factor into your future decisions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, we have Kayla Kirkendall. There you go. Can you, I see it. Can you unmute yourself?
I'm here.
Great. Can you please introduce yourself and keep your comments about three minutes?
Yes, my name is Kayla Kirkendall. I was also at the last meeting like Augustine. And again, we need a hazard pay ordinance. You know, the, the additional hazard pay could be used to help people pay rent bills. And also, you know, people who can't afford to get the tests and the vaccines for hazard pay or for the COVID, you know, we could use that as well as covering medical bills and debts. You know, Kroger sits here and gives us these thank you pays as credits on our reward cards, but can't give us hazard pay, which would help a lot of people get the essentials that they need in order to provide for their families. You know, why is it okay for Seattle to have a hazard pay ordinance but not Thurston County? It's like, are we not considered deserving or are we less fortunate than people in King County who are currently receiving the hazard pay? There's also some people right now that are in limbo on if they're gonna get their stimulus checks or not. And, you know, you have people in King County who are getting their hazard pay and stimulus checks, and then there's some of us that just aren't getting them at all. Um, you know, there has been numerous times like Augustine had mentioned where my husband told me that there was the, the the parking lot with a gun. It's not safe. Like, I go to work every day and feel like I'm not safe. I have customers coming in not wearing a mask that don't have a medical issue and just basically not even listening to the mandate of wearing a mask. And that's not fair. That's putting my life at risk. That's putting my coworkers' lives at risk. And, you know, Kroger's not doing anything with the money except for, you know, they could pay their associates a little bit better, and that's why we're asking for this hazard pay ordinance. We had it before and then they took our hazard pay away and that is kind of really wrong and immoral in my opinion. Especially during the circumstances that we are in of a pandemic that is not going away anytime soon.
Thank you. Next one up is Patrick Map. Yo, can you please unmute yourself and introduce yourself and keep your comments about three minutes?
There we go. Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Oh, perfect. Hi, my name is Patrick Map. I am also an employee at the Lacey Fred Meyer. And I wanted to encourage you to mandate some kind of hazard pay here in Lacey. I've worked here for about five years and unlike some of my coworkers, I'm doing okay right now. Some of my coworkers work two or three jobs to pay the bills. And in this last year, we've all been put under not just stress, but under a great deal of fear and worry because some of our coworkers have gotten sick and it happens over and over again. I just want to make three quick points about why this would be a really good idea to do. And I'll try to cut it really short. One, it would help immediately. Hazard pay would not just go into the pocketbooks or the bank accounts. People around me that when they get a windfall of money of any kind, like the stimulus check, it goes to pay their groceries. It pays for their car repairs, childcare. It goes right back into the economy. It helps those people's lives to keep a roof over their head and to keep them fed. And it helps the local economy as well. It's a really good thing overall. The, the second thing is that the businesses that would be affected by this can't afford it. This last year has been a huge year of profits, not just for my company, but for other grocery stores. And it isn't just because everybody sold billions of dollars of toilet paper last year, although I'm sure that helped, but they, they've made a ton of money and they can't afford it and they keep on dropping small bits of encouragement to us, but they're not going to unless it's mandated. Unless somebody says you have to do the right thing, they're quite frankly, not gonna take the extra step to do it. Even as a temporary measure, it would do wonders and it wouldn't be a burden on the industry itself. The third thing is simply that it's the right thing to do. From a moral and ethical position, mandating even a temporary hazard pay would be correct to do. It would help the citizens. It would help the economy. And it would call into line some of the most profitable businesses that are around right now. I think that it's kind of indefensible that they're not going to step up and do this, but I understand from a business perspective why they wouldn't. But that's what you guys are for. That's why we need our leadership to step up and we want to ask you to please do this to take care of the most, you know, some of the most important people in the community, some of my coworkers. Regardless of how dangerous it is, they're gonna put on their shoes and come to work every single day. And thank you very much for the time and thank you for the consideration.
Thank you. Then the, the last person we have signed up is Deanna Cunningham.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Hi.
Can you please introduce yourself and then keep your comments about three minutes?
My name is Deana Cunningham. I also work for the Lacey Fred Meyer. And I probably won't be a huge fan of people after today because I don't believe that it would be beneficial to our community. I got information off of the UFCW union website today that represent 1.3 million grocery store workers across our nation. And to date, they've only reported 139 deaths. It's awful, but there would have to be thousands and thousands more for that to even equal 1% of the working body. I do understand that there are people at great risk for their health, but Kroger and our union have set up programs for people who are high risk to not have to come into work. I understand that we have to deal with a lot of crap from people in retail, but that comes with the territory. And in our agreement, we agreed to take the pay that Kroger has given us. And they are offering all of their associates' vaccines and paying them to take it. I'm not saying that it's right for them to withhold hazard pay, but it's allowing them to have a break in a contract agreement that we have, and it's allowing them to close stores. Instead of helping communities, there are now hundreds and hundreds of associates who won't have jobs. So that is not going back into the community and they're telling them that they're going to replace these associates in current stores, which we all know that we are struggling with hours there as it is. I don't. I also there have to clean up hazardous waste like blood and bloodborne pathogens and feces at times. And we don't get paid extras to do that. And these people are not allowed to clean up those messes because they're hazardous. I just. It is sad that we have to deal with these situations, but breaking our contract and allowing Kroger to be able to close down stores instead is not the right answer. It just isn't. And I'm scared for people. Two more closings of stores were announced just a couple of days ago, and they can because we're breaking a contract that we agreed to. If they wanted to, they could fire every one of us and replace us with people who make less money. I'm just urging people to think about the actual future and the consequences instead of just getting money now. I know we're struggling. More people in this community lost their jobs last year. We still have them. I'm just hoping for grace and mercy and that people just realize and be grateful for what we do have. And maybe there's another option for this in the future, but I don't think forcing hazard pay right now is the right option. Thank you for your time.
I have a question for Deanna.
Yeah.
You stick around for a question. What is the associates' pay range?
It actually, it's not that bad. It's quite well. I have worked for the company for many years. And depending on what department you work in, the scales vary. Some are union and some are not. Some have worked their less time and make more than some who've worked their longer. We're not allowed to discuss like pay rates, but I know that we are one of the highest paid in Washington State. The employees are for Kroger.
Thank, thank you. I will be reporting out a little bit later. Conversation we had at the mayor's forum and so this, this topic came up, so I'll have more, more to talk about when I, when I report that out. So appreciate everyone's conversation here.
Thank you.
So that's the end of our, our public comments. Our next item on our agenda is referral from the planning commission. And it's like it's Jessica.
Good evening. This agenda item is regarding the Shoreline Master Program periodic review and the recommendation is to adopt an ordinance to complete the required periodic update to the city of Lacey Shoreline Master Program and associated regulations. So I've got a few slides to share with you and then we will open up for questions. I'll just share a little bit about what the Shoreline Master Program is, what the amendments were, and just the general process for updating the Shoreline Master Program. So what is it if you're not familiar? It's local land use policies and regulations that guide the use of Washington shorelines. So think of it as kind of an overlay on top of our existing zoning regulations. And the Shoreline Master Program applies to public and private uses, and it's required by the Shoreline Management Act. And the city completed a comprehensive update to our Shoreline Master Program in 2011. And the Shoreline Management Act was actually passed in 1971, and it was really about trying to prevent uncoordinated and piecemeal development of our state shorelines. It also really talked about the purpose of the act, really trying to balance shoreline priorities, and it listed preferred uses being water-dependent, water enjoyment, single-family development, of course, public access, access, and then, you know, protecting our natural environment as well on our shorelines. And it applies to currently all 39 Washington counties and about 250 towns with streams, rivers, lakes, or marine shorelines. And so it's really dependent upon what types of stream river and shorelines you have. So it's all marine waters. It's all streams and rivers with greater than 20 cubic feet per second mean annual flow. So it's about how much water is in that stream or river. Lakes 20 acres or larger, upland areas. Lakes 20 acres or larger upland areas called shorelands that extend 200 feet landward from the edge of the water, biological wetlands and river deltas connected to the water bodies. And then some are all the hundred year floodplain, including wetlands. So let's look at where that actually applies in Lacey. So it's marine waters. Way up on the northeast here, of course, we have this little stretch here on the squally reach. And then our lakes, we have chambers, Hicks, Long, Patterson and Southwick Lake all fall under shoreline master program jurisdiction. And then a portion of woodland creek up here in the north also fall under that. And you see the green areas. Those are the associated wetlands with those shorelines. And I'll just zoom in just a little bit so you can see the four different types of zoning designations we have for our shorelands. We have aquatic, natural, urban conservancy and shoreline residential. And they kind of go in order of most protected to most flexible. So for example, most of ours are shoreline residential. That's a lot of our zoning designation and quite a bit of natural as well with those associated wetlands. And as you can see, the boundary between the city and the urban growth area, you can notice that we have designations even in the urban growth area. Back in 2011, when we did the original big comprehensive update, we worked with the county jointly on these designations. When we did inventories and biological assessments. And so that whenever we are able to annex portions of things that are on the shoreline and the urban growth area, they've just become part of city Lacey and the designation would not change. And so the regulations are the same. Here's just a zoomed in view of northeast up there. There's a couple of different designations all tucked in to this tiny little spot. When I started working here, I didn't know we had a tiny marine up in northeast Lacey. These are all part of our shoreline up there. So what is a periodic update? Essentially, the state requires us to look at our shoreline master program every eight years. And it's really just kind of a housekeeping process where we really try to keep it current with if anything has changed state law that we reference. If there's any changes in our local plans or regulations, we need to update just any new improved data and information. And then ecology provides some grant funding to do that work. So we started this about a year ago, actually, and, um, kicked it off in basically March of 2020. Right when everything kind of slowed down, but we kept moving. We did probably with the city's first online virtual open house in April of 2020, and that went really well. And we had some amendments drafted by May, planning commission looked at those in July. We sent those to ecology for their review. And then we held a formal comment period and public hearing with department of ecology. It was really nice to have that joint process together to streamline it. Otherwise typically it was done at separate points in previous years. And this has really helped streamline the process and make it shorter. And so after the comment period, we responded, any comments we received submitted our final amendments to ecology for initial review. Those were accepted and approved. And so we received an initial determination. So now here we are at the bottom of local adoption, March 2021. And after we adapt locally, we send these back off to ecologies for their final official approval and adoption on their end. So they'll become final probably within about a month or so. And the amendments themselves, um, you know, they're really not substantive. We, we had to do a little housekeeping. And so anything that changed in definitions, exemptions, cross references kind of on the legislative level at the state, we, we updated that. There's really nothing of note to share on those critical areas, anything that was updated in our critical areas. That's, um, most recently updated that. The only thing really important is by our wetland buffers. And those are really changed by the department of ecology a few years ago. So we just updated our wetland buffers. Basically a big table where if someone's trying to do a wetland assessment, they figure out where their buffers are. And it just, it's all about what's in that table, kind of the guideline. So we just made sure ours matched the states. And then our development regulations, we really made an effort to try to reorganize the section, especially on the residential development side of things, just try to reorganize things and put them together, you know, just make it more streamlined to administer on our end as well. Just clarified some sections. They document originally, I would say it was like about this thick, now it's about that thick. So we just kind of tried to remove some of the appendices that weren't needed and really tried to streamline it and make it easier to administer and understand and share with our residents who have questions about their shoreline properties. So we had a dedicated project page for it that had all of the documents, notices of our open houses, recordings of the open house, notices of the public hearings, all that good stuff. And we sent, um, a letter to every address in the shoreline zones. And so they received notice of all the things we were doing and a few people interacted with us based on that, but really not much. And I think we didn't have a lot of public comment because there really wasn't anything substantively changing that would impact people's properties or anything they were trying to do on the development side. And, um, so once again, we're kind of here at the bottom, we're at local adoption. And then ecology will adopt it. And the staff recommendation is to approve an ordinance to adopt the changes to our shoreline master program. And with that, I'm more than happy to take questions.
There any questions? Deputy Mayor, do you have something?
I don't have the questions. I was just going to move that we adopt the ordinance to complete the required periodic update to the city of Lacey shoreline master program and associated regulations.
Thanks, Sells. It's been moved in second to adopt this ordinance to complete their hard update, the city's Lacey shoreline master program. Is there any discussion? One of the things I was just looking at is there's a many big changes to the grandfather status, which is what affects most people along, you know, our shorelines and Lacey. And I didn't see really any big changes there as you, as you pointed out. So I don't have any questions. Who else? Then it's been moved in second to adopt this ordinance. All in prayer of that motion signified by CNI.
Aye.
Aye. Is there any post? And that motion carries. Thanks, Jessica.
Thank you all. Have a good night.
Yep, you too. The next we have a referral from the hearings examiner. This is, uh, for a planned residential development and site plan review.
Good evening. Well, tonight I am here with, to present with a recommendation from the hearings examiner for the approval of a planned residential development and site plan review application to construct 183 unit multifamily complex on about nine and a half acres of moderate, moderate density zoned property. It's an area that has, um, oops, let me pull up my presentation. Sorry about that. It is in an area that has seen quite a bit of growth. Oops, there we go. How's that? Um, it's in an area that has seen quite a bit of growth over the last five to seven years. As, as you well know, the property on the, um, to the, to the east of Marvin Road has developed substantially with the North Point property and the new Home Depot, uh, the U line. So this area has seen quite a bit of growth and the property in question is these, there's three part undeveloped parcels here sort of right in the middle of your screen. And then there's the new-ish gateway, we're north residential duplex development to the west. And to the east is the community action councils, Toleme Cove Apartments. Just to the southwest, we've got the gateway residential subdivision. And then to the southeast, we have the brand new Wash Dot Facility, regional headquarters and the newly constructed 31st Avenue. Now this property is actually going to be accessing off of that, uh, 31st Avenue as well as off of 32nd. So we'll have two gated access points, um, from the north and the south. Multifamily.
And that will all go down to Gateway Boulevard too, right?
Um, yes, well, they will be, they'll be able to access Gateway Boulevard from, um, from the cul-de-sac or from, excuse me, from the gated access on this property, on the 31st, then down to Gateway Boulevard. Multifamily isn't allowed use in moderate density residential and doesn't typically require going through the hearing process. It typically is just, uh, site plan review approval. However, this, the applicant is seeking approval for an additional three units per acre. So under a typical moderate density residential, you can go up to 16 units per acre. And so this, this proposal is looking at 19 units per acre. In order to qualify for the density bonus, a project has to include four of the, of the five following amenities. Significant recreational activities within common open space areas. Substantial retention of natural vegetation and trees. Vegetated low impact development facilities that also serve as a visual. Exceptional landscaping beyond the minimum required and then access to a natural body of water. In the case of this project, there is not a stream or a lake nearby. So that just does not apply. So they'll be going for those, uh, the first four amenities I mentioned. And there's a pretty significant analysis in the staff report into how, as to how they met those. Yes?
No, go ahead.
Okay, I heard a question.
Yeah.
Another major element of the planned residential ordinance, um, as you may remember from previous applications is the requirement of 30% open space versus the traditional 20% open space requirement for most multifamily projects. And in the case of this project, there, they've got, they have lots of, of open space and I will. In fact, there's, there's the open space plan that was submitted with the, with the application. They're going to have actually more, they require the 5% tree tract, but they're going to be over, um, significantly over that. There's going to be a dog park. There's a clubhouse that has lots of, you know, uh, exercise room, pool, those types of things. And then eventually, once the applicant sort of gets closer to making application and they have a better idea of how they want to market these and who they want to market these apartments to, um, they'll come in with a more finalized plan, um, looking at how we're going to, what types of open space uses will fill in in some of these sort of lighter green areas. Cause it definitely more opportunities there as well. The virtual public hearing was held on February 8th with no members of the public in attendance. However, several members of the public did provide written comment during the public comment period with concerns regarding traffic and school mitigation or impacts, stormwater management, tree retention and housing affordability. These comments are attached as exhibits to the staff report. The hearings examiner is recommending approval of both the site plan review and the planned residential development applications with conditions of approval substantially as recommended by staff. And I'm just requesting that council approve the PRD and SPR application subject to these conditions, findings, facts and conclusions of law as specified in the hearings examiner's report dated February 23rd, 2021. So with that, if you have any questions, I would be happy to answer those at this time.
Is there any questions? Can you, uh, um, thank you for sharing that. I, I was trying to find that, um, in the report of what it actually looked like. And so appreciate you.
It's a big document, so.
It's a huge document. And I could see how they, you know, the, the, the plan to meet those four requirements. Before I take a motion, where there's, there's five possible requirements, you know, that, um, I'm not sure if we've had a conversation about, um, adding where, what other things could be on, on those requirements. For example, uh, if we add, if there's a, um, affordable housing component to that, maybe we could add, um, bonus. You know, uh, units as well as an option, but that's, uh, no hearing of theirs. So when it comes to this specific hearings examiner, it looks like they've met all those requirements. Uh, Deputy Mayor.
So following up on that, on the seat, you may want to take a motion first, but I do have a question. On the SEPA document, it clearly stated, um, that there are, um, 182 middle to low income units, that the project will construct 182 middle to low income units. And that's page 12 of the SEPA number eight, uh, page 84 of the total 700 pages. And then also that, um, it will have, um, again, 182 units total. Which then, so it sounds like all 182 units will be low income. And then I have another discrepancy, but could you address that? Is it low income? And if it is, what does that mean by they're just standards? Because they have swimming pools, they have trails, they have a number of other rather, um, nice amenities. And, um, which is, would be good if it's low income, but I'm just curious.
Sure. So can, real quick, just so I make sure we're on this, we're talking about the same thing. Which exhibit is it that you're referencing?
It's the SEPA document.
So is it the MDNS, the mitigated determination, or is it the checklist?
It's the checklist number, and it's page 84 of the 700 pages, page 12 of SEPA.
Gotcha. Hold on, let me get there and, uh.
And my assumption is it's still 182 units total. Because that's what it says on the SEPA document also.
Um, I, 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 my understanding is that it is, um, you're right, it, it does say that. However, my understanding is that it's going to be market rate housing. Um, and that's how the decision documents were written. That's, uh, was part of the.
Well, how, how can you approve the, the SEPA document if the document says it's low income and it's really market rate?
Well, all of their other, um, application materials, um, what we do is when we're going through a checklist, we will go through and sort of make comment, comments on, you know, separate from the document. And the, the, um, the environmental checklist isn't, it isn't, you're right, it is a disclosure document and I just, and well, you're, you're correct. I didn't necessarily notice that when we were reviewing it. That's, um, I know for a fact that that was, it's intended to be sort of market rate, market rate housing.
Would it, would it change any of the requirements, whether it's market rate or, or low income for, for our?
That's a good question. No, it would not change any, any of the, any of the requirements.
Can you demand that it be, um, for low income then? When you permit it, since that's what they said it was going to be first?
No, we can't, we can't, we can't require that. That wasn't in any of the other, um, analysis. All of the other, you know, our decisions that we made were based on other portions of the record. That aren't reflective of that. It's unfortunate that, you know, that, uh, that was in there. And I suspect it may have been from a previous prod, project that this, um, consultant group or applicant worked on. Cause I know that they've done a few of those, but.
We don't require, um, is it like 10% of the total to be, um, a tax credits for 12, 12 years? We don't ever demand that.
Well, this was, we didn't do, they didn't do, um, um, multi-family tax exemption here, which is what, where that, where you're talking about Deputy Mayor. And so that's, that, and that, so that's always my big question is if, if this changed anything for our multifamily or, you know, under our this particular review, and it doesn't look like it does. You know, and that sort of, that does go to talking about maybe having some, in the future, having some bonus, um, units available if they're lower income, but that, you know, that's not part of this record. I think it's something to discuss, but part of this record.
We have had projects, um, in the past that have, have, or a project that I can think of, um, I think it's, another gateway residential located out in the mixed use high density corridor, um, in, on Martin, on Martin way for east. That did do that. They did incorporate some, um, as a way to get some in bonus density. But the zoning code in that area, in that, uh, that specific zoning code, the mixed use high density corridor zoning code actually has specific provisions that allow the city to do that. The moderate density, um, district doesn't have those same provisions. So.
So wouldn't that be a tool to, so say if they're not meeting their, um, tree count or credits? To do something more, uh, um, low income or if they didn't meet other thresholds? I, I agree. I thought we're getting off topic. That's, I think that discussion for another time. We have to look at just this record. Uh, as, as far as I can tell, they've, they've met the requirements of the hearings examiner on, on, on what we require for the bonus density, which is why this is before us. So I, I don't see anything that disputes, you know, them meeting those requirements. Um, so.
But the SEPA document is part of the record.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good question, but I, I think it was pointed out that those, these require.
Maybe add a little bit more clarity. Yes, the infernal checklist did have that information in it. And the person filling out that checklist was probably looking at market rate and looking at the question about whether these be high, middle or incoming or low income. And he, uh, whoever that filled out, filled that out to their best judgment. But as we review that SEPA checklist, we're also looking at this as a market rate. There's no, um, quick, quick requirements to create, uh, low income by city definitions. And, uh, it is a market rate proposal. So as we review that checklist, while we look at, you know, look at from a city definition of low income from an applicant filling out, they may looking at where it's priced in the market at a market rate, uh, a level. And so we issued the SEPA determination, we did not put any conditions or requirements on it through SEPA that they'd have to put low income because there's nothing there to substantiate that. Now, as we look at our development codes, we look at, uh, what are those criteria they have to get to meet, to meet this bonus density and low income is not one of those, those programs. Now there is a different level in another zoning district that allows, um, you know, uh, bonuses for certain. Now, there is a different level in another zoning district that allows, um, you know, uh, bonus densities for certain, uh, public benefits, and one of those categories is low income, and that's a whole different zoning classification and standard of requirements. So for this project, it's based off of the, of, of the, the PRD pro- program as well as underlying zoning, and, and the project has been reviewed against that, and it meets those provisions for moving forward.
With that, can I get a motion, please?
I would move to approve project nineteen dash three-five-three planned residential development and site plan review for Griffin multifamily.
Second.
I'm going to second it. Have some more discussion, uh, council member, seven?
Oh, I would just note, this is the kind of development that we need, multi-use, um, you know, smaller units, uh, that, that ultimately are less squall, you know, less core footage, so ultimately result in, in being less, uh, expensive. And, uh, uh, development that encourages a healthy lifestyle, trails, gym, stuff like that. If it's missing anything, it's a low income, um, portion, but it's got everything else, it's all great, it's, um, exceeds the tree um, credits, you can go on and on, it's, it's a good project.
Uh, Deputy Mayor?
So you're right, it exceeds the tree designations, and that's true. Uh, although they did talk about in the tree def- um, discussion that there was a hundred and fifty-nine unit multifamily housing rather than a hundred and eighty-two, so that was confusing, but, but the other thing is, this is not just market rate, it's high-end market rate, and that's, we're missing the, the medium to lower income housing, and so we're not even promoting that, I guess. You know, yes, this is market rate and it's great, but I do feel kind of bad that we don't even try to encourage low income.
Oh, I, I understand where you're coming from, um, Deputy Mayor, and I think we, we've been having these conversations for, for a little bit, and I, and I do think we do have some strategies going forward. But, you know, when it comes to this record, which is what we have to look at, you know, um, they, they followed the rules, uh, to get the bonus, um, density here, and so according to this record, I, I, you know, I think they've met the intent, and so, uh, you know, I think it's a decent conversation having the future about having both bonus density in, in this type of zone, um, if some of it's, uh, you know, lower income, but that's not part of this record, so it's tough to it's tough to judge them against that, like, Councilmember Greenstein, and then-
I'm just, I'm gonna call for the question, because I think we're getting way off of the record of this hearing examiner report that we're supposed to be voting on.
Let me go with Councilmember Miller, uh, then we can have a conversation, or we can go.
Uh, for the re- for the record, project number is nineteen dash five-five-three.
Nineteen dash five-five-three.
It's, it, it actually is three fifty-three, I noticed, I noticed it, it's in the agenda is printed incorrectly.
Oh, okay, my fault.
I, I thought my, uh, dyslexia was coming back to get me here.
So we have the correct, the, was the motion with the correct project number?
The motion didn't have the correct project number, written wrong in the agenda.
Okay, is there any other, any other discussion specific to this record? Then seeing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? Then the motion carries. Thank you, and I, I do look forward to having more conversations about, about how we get some more, uh-
I'm not stating, by the way.
Uh, Rick, Rick, you have something to put?
Yeah, if I could just wrap up the conversation that just, because it was a really good conversation, and, and the council's correct, you have the record before you with the rules that the application was vested under. Going forward, this has been a topic that of, uh, for a year or two, the housing, uh, strategy plan that the city adopted, the council adopted two years ago. And now we're getting ready to go through the, uh, public review of the housing action plan, and these are the type of things that are gonna be coming in, because we're gonna have good demographic, uh, data and demographics to apply to that. So going forward, the, uh, draft housing action plan will be coming to council in May-June. Plan Commission is gonna have their first public, uh, meeting, the work session on it this, um, April sixth. We're gonna use April as our outreach month, so there's gonna be an opportunity to talk about, um, the housing market of all levels, and how do we do, try to incentivize certain types of housing that are needed in our markets. This conversation will be coming back to council this, this spring, and be a part of the comp plan, annual comp plan updates in July.
Appreciate that, Rick. Uh, Malcolm?
Yeah, um, Rick, what have we done in the past to incentivize or promote, you know, prop- or properties and developments like, um, I think it's Copperwood and, you know, some of the other projects that we have that are, uh, more affordable. Uh, I know that the reserve is very affordable, and uh, I hear lots of good commentary, um, about the reserve, and people are very happy, especially with the pricing and the numbers uh, that they can pay to get in there, live there. Um, what are we gonna have to do for, going forward to, to, you know, have some, some realization of, of affordable housing, uh, in our community?
We're gonna have to look at, um, trying to figure out what type of incentives that we can put in. We have incentives in the past, uh, whether it be bonus densities or other type of things. Um, and the challenge with that is, even with those incentives, we haven't had a lot of the private sector come forward with the, the, the lower income type units, because a lot of, part of it too is, if you get in, um, other type of partnerships, you're gonna have to have some type of agreement, commitment to long-term, and that is sometimes a challenge on, on the private market side as their long-term ownership, uh, evolves. The reserve is a great project, that was, um, developed by a private development company that specializes in low-income senior housing, and they specialize in working with the, um, Housing Trust Fund to get those Housing Trust Fund dollars to build required low income, and they got the reporting system downs to go through, uh, with the state to ensure that those are, uh, low income long-term. Uh, so again, it's, it's one of those challenges, is if you try to force low income, not everybody has the expertise to, to work with low-income units and make sure they have the reporting requirements. So it is, uh, something that we do need to look at and figure out how we encourage the, um, the private market to do that, but right now the market is really hot, and so everybody's trying to look at how they fit within the current market rates. The other way is, is also working at public projects, and then of course, that's a whole different type of revenue stream and coordination, that's something that the regional housing council is starting to wrestle with right now, and they're in their, um, five-year, uh, planning efforts.
Good, thank you. We're, we have a pretty long agenda today, so I'll try to get on with it. Um, next up, uh, is under resolutions, um, uh, resolution eleven oh-three to accept the, join the Niskali River Council, Julie.
Hi, good evening, everyone. So, uh, this will be brief, I'm just following up on the briefing I gave you at the council work session on February twenty-fifth regarding the letter from the Niskali River Council inviting the city of Lacey to become a voting, voting member of the Niskali River Council. Again, the Niskali River Council is a longstanding volunteer coordination group with a mission to create sustainability in the watershed by developing a common culture of environmental, social and economic balance. Then, then the Niskali River Council and their partner programs have a long track record of success, working together to implement the Niskali Watershed Stewardship Plan and other initiatives to promote the health of the watershed. So to accept the invitation, the city just needs to provide acceptance in writing, nothing formal, indicating the city's representative, who will be the city's liaison with the Niskali River Council. So the resolution before you is to accept the invitation and authorizes the designation of city representatives on the council, the resolution doesn't actually indicate the representative, so that will be just a decision that will need to be put in the, the acceptance when, when the city so does, so that's all I had. Did, does anyone have any questions?
No, thank you for that, can I get a motion?
I move that we approve the resolution, um, eleven oh-three to accept the invitation to join the Niskali River Council.
Second.
Second. Is there any discussion? Everyone go unmute there? Uh, Councilmember Cox?
Oh, I'm very excited to see this day, I think this has been a long time coming, and I think we need this partnership with the tribe, so yay, this is a big day.
And, and just for the, the councils, um, for the record, uh, next Wednesday, we'll, or next work session, we'll, so, just a brief discussion about who's gonna, who's gonna represent us, um, at the, so we, we have a, we haven't put, put that formally in the, but we will discuss it here real soon, so. Is there any other discussion? Then all, um, all for the motion to approve this resolution to accept the invitation to join the Niskali River Council, say aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
So now we're on to ordinances. Um, the first ordinance is the fifteen-eight-six approving the twenty-twenty budget encumbrance carryovers. Troy, yeah, good to see you.
Great, good to see you, thank you, Mr. Mayor, good evening, council. For your consideration tonight, you do have an ordinance that will amend the two thousand and twenty-one budget. Uh, within these amendments are, well, really it's limited to what we call encumbrance carryovers, which are uh, budget items from the previous year that were not completed, and we want to carry those forward to this year's budget so we can complete those projects. I mean, you do have the full details of the proposed amendments in the packet, I would like to highlight a few of the more significant council priorities. And looking at the details, there's about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars in carryovers for homeless services. That includes, uh, encampment cleanup, uh, bed sheltering partnerships with the Family Support Center as well as Interfaith Works. Also includes affordable housing, and of course, the council's, um, funding of the, in partnership with North Thurston School District for the Family Resource Center. Um, there are about one point six million dollars in carryovers related to the building improvements at the Veteran Services Hub. There is about four hundred and forty thousand dollars included to complete the new museum design. There is four hundred and sixty-four thousand in the proposed ordinance for the Woodland District. Um, you might remember this from about two years ago, this was an economic development initiative of the council, uh, this was uh, was planned to be used to put in utilities for a multifamily development. Um, I think there's other, potentially other funding sources, I think this will be a future council dis- discussion, but I did want to highlight that since it's a fairly significant amount. There is two hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars for the completion of the Great Kyo Community Park Master Plan. There's about three hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars in the carryover for a couple different RAG projects. And the remainder, or the bulk of the remainder of the, uh, amendments are related to utility capital, right around six point two million dollars. Uh, there's a variety of projects that need to be completed, but the most significant and roughly half of the amendment request is related to the Capital Golf Course Water and Sewer Project. So that concludes my summary, I would recommend you adopt ordinance and amend the budget, and of course, I'll turn this back over to you for count-
I would move to adopt ordinance number fifteen-eight-six, amending the two thousand and twenty-one budget.
Second. It, uh, it's been moved and seconded to, um, it's, this is the twenty-twenty budget encumbrance carryovers, right, to, um, many of the twenty-twenty budget, yes, um, okay, discussion. Are you discussion? I don't see any. Then, all in favor of that motion? Signify by saying aye.
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 Is there anyone to post? Then that motion carries. Thank you so much, Troy, appreciate it. And, uh, now we'll go to ordinance fifteen-eight-seven, which is, uh, Animal Services License B. Dave, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. So animal services are provided regionally by, uh, pursuant to an interlocal agreement between Lacey, Olympia, Tomwater and Thurston County, as this council well knows. However, all licensing fees are set by each jurisdiction separately. So there's a preference that the Joint Animal Services Commission set these fees, this will re- result in increased efficiency and, uh, more consistent fees, uh, throughout the jurisdictions. Presently, we all have consistent fees, but anytime there's a change, every jurisdiction's gotta do something on their own timeline to achieve that. Uh, later this evening, uh, this council's gonna be presented with an interlocal agreement, uh, an amendment to the existing interlocal agreement, and that amendment contains authorization that the, that Jazzcom set those fees. So what we need to do now, uh, in order to be consistent with that interlocal, is to amend, uh, the LMC, which presently, um, sets fees by resolution of the council, so we're asking that, uh, this council adopt an ordinance delegating the setting of those animal license fees to Jazzcom. So that is the recommendation, and if you have any questions.
Any questions?
Uh, I would like to move that we approve ordinance fifteen-eight-seven, amending section seven point oh-four point oh-four oh of the Lacey Municipal Code to delegate the setting of animal license fees to the Jazzcom Board.
Second.
Moving seconded, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? The motion carries. Thanks, Dave. So, uh, next, our mayor's report, boy, it's just, it's been one of these couple, last couple weeks for me, uh, how, as, as the mayor of Lacey, it seems like I've taken a lot of meetings for some reason, a lot of, a lot of things going on right now, but it's just, uh, always happens this time of year, when there's, there's a lot going on, but, uh, other than that, I will turn it over to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. So we have a number of items, uh, for discussion tonight. The first one is the Watershed Restoration Enhancement Plan for, uh, YR thirteen, Julie Rector's gonna provide the briefing on that.
Hello again, so, um, the YR thirteen Watershed Restoration Enhancement Plan uh, was prepared over the last two and a half years by a local stakeholder group that was convened by Angela Johnson of the Department of Ecology, and you'll recall that Angela, uh, gave you a presentation at the February twenty-fifth council work session meeting, uh, during which she gave you an overview of the requirements that need to be met by, through the Watershed Restoration Enhancement Plans, and she summarized some of the key findings and recommendations in the final draft RI thirteen plan. Again, RI thirteen is the Deschutes River watershed that includes uh, other sub-basins, including the Woodland Creek sub-basin. So the plan prepared by the committee meets the requirements of the Seaflo- Streamflow Restoration Act for the Deschutes River watershed. And for, just for a quick review, some of the key findings of the plan is that the plan projects two thousand six hundred and sixteen new permit-exempt wells will be added within the boundaries of RI thirteen over the twenty-year pler- planning period, which is twenty eighteen to twenty thirty-eight. Majority of these wells are, uh, anticipated to be in the rural and unincorporated areas, um, around mainly the Deschute, lower and mid Deschutes River basins, as well as Johnson Point, Cooper Point and Boston Harbor sub-basins. Very few permit-exempt wells are actually, um, anticipated for the Woodland Creek watershed, um, probably because most of the watershed, uh, there's, there's not a lot of buildable land left there. But the plan estimates in-stream flow impacts resulting from the consumptive use portions of these new, uh, permit-exempt wells. And the projected in-stream flow impact is roughly four hundred and sixty-one acre feet per year, and that's spread out over the entire watershed. And the plan identifies projects that, when they're implemented, they will more than offset the projected in-stream flow impacts, um, which will meet the intent for enhancing stream flows and providing a net ecological benefit over the entire Deschutes River basin. So while the plan projects four hundred and sixty-one acre feet in total impacts, the plan is proposing projects that will provide one thousand three hundred and sixteen acre feet in offsets and flow enhancements. The two largest projects that are proposed, um, there's one in Snyder's Prairie, which is in the Lower Deschutes River Basin, uh, kinda just east of the airport. The other one is the Hicks Lake Stormwater Retrofrit Project within the city of Lacey. Um, that project is a water offset prep project that will upgrade Lacey's existing stormwater facility to provide additional water quality treatment and to incorporate groundwater infiltration, which will provide those water offsets, and this is the only viable water offset project proposed in the Woodland Creek Basin. Funding for the projects is anticipated to come mainly from state grants as part of the Streamflow Restoration Act, the legislature set aside almost thirty million dollars to be awarded on a competitive basis over this twenty-year period, and so, uh, that's the main source of, uh, funding that we'll be looking for, for implementing the plan. Um, as far as, uh, uh, implementing the plan, one of the key recommendations in the plan is to create a long-term implementation group that will oversee and track implementation of the plan. Uh, the committee is referring to this group as the Deschutes River Council, and we anticipate that Lacey will be an active participant on this council, council and will participate in the creation of the council. And obviously, we'll have a lead role in implementing the Hicks Lake Stormwater Retrofrit Project. So the next what required step in this planning process is that all members of the Watershed Restoration Enhancement Committee must approve the plan prior to the plan being adopted by the Department of Ecology, and we're trying to meet the state legislature's deadline, which is Ecology needs to adopt the plan by June thirtieth, and so the committee will be- which is ecology needs to adopt the plan by June thirtieth. And so the committee will be meeting next month on April twentieth to approve the plan and then forward the plan off to ecology. Ecology's review will include the net ecological benefit analysis and will also include a public review portion. So staff recommendation is for the city to authorize Lacey's Riot thirteen representative, which is De- Deputy Mayor Pratt, to approve the final draft plan of the Riot thirteen watershed restoration enhancement plan. And uh, that's all I had. I'm happy to answer any questions, but uh, Deputy, Deputy Mayor, do you have anything to add to this since you've been part of this entire process?
Only that, um, it, we had a real diverse group of uh, participants and uh, including the Squaxon Tribe and um, Dirt and a few others in master builders. Um, and I, I thought it received a lot of input from all of us and from all of um, the various parties that have uh, a stakeholder uh, interest in it. And so um, I think it's a pretty good plan, actually. It does not immediately lock us into doing the Hicks Lake project until we have funding. I think that's important to know. And that's all I can say about it.
Is there any other questions? Can I get a motion please?
But, well, I hate to move it because I'm the representative that's going to prove it. So hopefully somebody else gets it.
I'll do the rare motion. I'll move that we authorize Lacey's Riot thirteen representative to approve the final draft of the Riot thirteen watershed restoration enhancement plan.
Second.
Now it's been moved and seconded. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none. All in favor of that motion? Signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Then Deputy Mayor, you can uh, sign the plan. Uh, next up, um, it's the inner-city transit interlocal agreement.
And I believe uh, Scott Eggers can provide the background on this one.
Uh, good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. Please uh, give me just a minute and I will upload a screen here to share. So you'll see the uh, display there.
Yep.
All right. So this item before you is an interlocal agreement between inner-city transit and the city of Lacey for transit signal priority. Staff is recommending that the city council authorize city manager to sign this ILA. Uh, before I describe the details about transit signal priority, I'd like to provide a little bit of history, part of which is on the screen here. In two thousand thirteen, the region received congestion mitigation air quality funding, uh, that's CMAQ or most commonly known as CMAC. So I received that funding to upgrade our signal controllers in order to provide for more efficient signalization, which internally provide or improve the efficiency and movement of pedestrians, vehicles and transit. So Lacey participated in a regional system engineering study with TRPC, inner-city transit, uh, the DOT, Thurston County, Olympia and Tomwater to select the controllers and associated traffic management software uh, that went along with them. So the total project, which we built in two phases, uh, installed forty-three new controllers and cabinets and a project was broken into two phases. So the first phase, which you see here on the screen, uh, all those dots installed in the north part of Lacey, thirty-two uh, new controllers and cabinets at the intersection shown. So their red dots represent uh, Lacey, which is twenty, uh, twenty-four Lacey intersections. The green dots represent Thurston County. There are four installed at Thurston County intersections and four to DOT. So Thurston County and the DOT control theirs, but they, we have maintenance agreements with them. Um, so we operate, operate those. And I'm gonna try to see, step down here if I can. So this map shows phase two. So in phase two, there were eleven more inner uh, controllers installed in, in South Lacey. And, and part of those new and updated controllers uh, would allow uh, inner-city transit to install uh, hardware for um, for transit preempt. Um, so anyway, transit priority is a little bit different than the signal preempt that's provided by police, fire and ambulance service. You know, you'll see that, you know, when a, when a public safety vehicle's coming through, they can push the button. It'll turn green anytime. The transit priority doesn't change to that degree. It will add green time at the start or end of a signal phase. So if a bus is approaching a signalized intersection and it's green and it's about to turn red, it will sense the bus and add ten to fifteen more seconds of green time to allow the bus to, to, to move through and interrupted. And by the same token, if the bus is approaching a, an intersection and the signal's red and it's toward the end of the red phase, it'll turn to green ten to fifteen seconds earlier to allow the, the bus to move forward. Um, so this current ILA, uh, they, what inner-city transit is in the process of doing right now is finalizing an RFQ to go out and advertise to hire a consultant to help uh, facilitate the installation of the hardware and software and get this operational. So the initial ILA has, has designated uh, five intersections uh, shown with these uh, red stars along Martin Way. So at Martin Way and College, at Martin Way Village, at Desmond Drive, Galaxy, uh, Marvin Road and Costco. The agreement allows uh, inner-city transit then to add preempt to more intersections as their studies say may indicate where that would be advantageous. And then also if uh, they find that there's an intersection where it's been installed and they see no advantage, it also allows them to remove it. It also provides for a um, an agreement where if they need our assistance or our help, that they can hire us to, to help them. So I'd like to uh, thank Roger Schessel and Martin Hoppy uh, and also Eric Phillips from inner-city transit for, for putting this together. So with that said, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
I actually.
Moved uh, for his manager to sign the interlocal agreement with inner-city transit for. Think we got, sorry, I got the motion you kind of froze up there.
I second it.
The motion is a second, Councilor Cox.
Well, I really appreciate the staff's work on this and as the city's representative on inner-city transit, I can tell you that the Martin Way has been the most challenging of the routes for the inner-city's transit to keep on time. And that means everything when you're trying to get people to work and to where they need to go. So I think this is going to be a, a real enhancement. And I'm looking forward to seeing how it works. Thanks.
Any other questions? So, so it looks like we're, we're focusing on the, on the Martin Way corridor from the get-go. How, how are the other jurisdictions adding that into their system? Are they still, are they focusing on that same corridor? Were they implementing in other, other parts of their city as well?
You know, I, I haven't had that conversation with inner-city transit. I, I'm not sure, but part of uh, the services that the consultant who they will hire will provide will be analyzing intersections, you know, in Lacey and other, you know, in the other cities as well to prioritize where they find would be the greatest benefit.
Great. Any other discussion? Then it's been uh, moved and seconded to allow our city manager to sign this interlocal agreement. All in favor of that motion? Signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. So the next item is the Joint Animal Services amended an interlocal agreement. Uh, Director of Animal Services Sarah Hawk will provide that information and background to you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Um, tonight we're discussing the amendments to the ILA for Jazzcom. Um, the Joint Animal Services Commission does recommend the adoption of the amendments to the intergovernmental agreement. The document um, is what is able to regulate operations for joint animal services. The last time that the document was updated was in two thousand fourteen. Um, in November twenty twenty, Jazzcom reviewed and recommended changes to the intergovernmental agreement. It is important to note that the basic document remains the same, um, except for updates to language and revisions necessary to reflect the changes recommended to ensure animal services operations are optimal. So there are four major changes of note in this agreement that the council should be aware of. The first is in section three A five in reference to the members of the governing body known as Jazzcom. One optional member selected by a nonprofit organization based in Thurston County with shared animal welfare priorities such as a nonprofit shall be selected by members of the commission. This is to allow when um, moving forward on specific projects or to ensure that the mission of their, of um, joint animal services is moving forward, Jazzcom would like the ability to add an optional member when um, one is needed for additional um, mutual interests of that nonprofit. The second is in section three F six in reference to powers and duties of the commission. You recently just passed an ordinance granting powers to Jazzcom to set licensing fees. That is what that section entails. So license fee shall be established by Jazzcom. Section seven C and section eleven are in reference to the jurisdiction's responsibilities to pay off the loan that was obtained for the current shelter facility. That loan was obtained back in nineteen ninety-six. Um, that loan has subsequently been paid off in full and so we have removed the language that speaks of repayment of that loan. Section eight is in references, in reference to the commission's ability to contract with other parties to provide services. Um, animal services could then provide services to non-members. So the, outside the four jurisdictions um, through contract, revenue received for such services cannot be less than the cost to provide such services. And Jazzcom shall approve all non-member contracts related to additional services. Any additional services should also not affect the four jurisdictions' contracts and service times as well. So those are the four major changes that we have made to the interlocal agreement. Um, the cities of Olympia and Tomwater have already a, voted and approved the updated ILA as well as Thurston County. So city of Lacey is being the fiduciary, fiduciary custodian is last to sign to seal everything up and approve so we can move forward. And I will open it up to questions at this time.
We get a motion? No one wants, no one wants, two motions today, huh? Well, then I will move that we authorize the city manager to sign the amended interlocal, intergovernmental agreement between the cities of Lacey, Olympia and Tomwater and Thurston County for joint animal service operations.
A second.
Seconded, uh, discussion.
Sure, everybody wants a second.
Go ahead, Ed.
Yeah, so this is just, just a question. I'm not suggesting that we would consider doing this. But uh, it, what, how difficult is the process if we decide that the interlocal agreement, it no longer fits within our interest and we decide to rescind? How, how difficult is that to do? Not to say that, that, that's not, that's not even in my purview personally, or I don't think it's in the council's purview either. Uh, but just, just for the record, just for clarification.
For clarification, for jurisdiction to rescind, um, per the ILA, the other governing bodies that are a part of the interlocal agreement also need to vote and approve the exit and there needs to be substantial notice. However, there is of note, um, as an incorporated body, you are required to provide animal control. So even though you were to exit our agreement, then the city of Lacey would need to then consequently find a way to provide animal control for the city of Lacey.
Thank you.
Good clarification. Uh, is there any other questions? I'm seeing none. And all in favor of the, this motion to authorize the city manager to sign this amended intergovernmental agreement? Signify by saying aye.
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 Alright.
Is there anyone opposed? The motion carries. Thanks, Sarah.
Thank you.
So our next item is Lacey Cares. This is a community outreach engagement process. We're very excited about this. We're about to launch. And uh, Steve Kirkman, our Public Affairs Manager, is going to brief council on that issue.
Yes, sir. Yes, Steve.
Sir, how are you?
Yeah, it's good to see you.
Good to see you. Uh, great to be here and uh, see, it seems like it's been a while since I've been to one of these. So we are really pleased to uh, come together tonight and share some information about you. A general overview of the Lacey Cares Initiative that we are going to be prepared to enter next week. And I'm going to share my screen here briefly and run you through just some quick slides. So Lacey Cares, um, we briefed on one of the committees, I believe it was the General Government Committee about a month ago. And uh, it is going to be uh, a, it might don't seem to work here. There we go. Uh, it's going to be one of the, our, this was one of the most challenging years that the city's probably gone through in its history. And as we mentioned at the committee last month, we're anxious to, although we've done a pretty good job with engaging uh, all things considered, uh, we're looking at both COVID sort of uh, winding to a close hopefully here soon and re-engaging with the community on some things that, that we like to think are the sort of the, the nicer side of being in government and the more exciting things and not to say anything bad about the transportation or sewer projects we just saw. And we uh, really look forward to it. We, the primary purpose is to re-engage and get our residents and students and visitors and businesses to kind of help us see how Lacey might look and feel and be in the future. And that's um, um, you know, something we used to do in the old days at community workshops and, and that type of thing. And so we're hopeful that we can re-engage that way. Uh, we're super excited to be working with Jason Robertson of JRO and Company um, as the principal consultant on the project. Many of you know of Jason's reputation or have actually worked with him on different projects in the past. Um, he is a absolute um, genuine asset to the city and to this project and it's definitely going to be more success, successful because of that. We will be in a phased approach. Phase one is what will be kicking off next week and that will run through approximately the end of May. We may sneak into June a week or two, but we'll kind of see how it goes at that time. And part of that is, or a big part of that is actually the lacycares.org website and the um, accompanying survey. So what I'm going to do is try to switch screens here quickly and let you see what the website looks like. That is the site. And uh, Jason's firm was um, instrumental in helping us put this together. And in addition to some background and some nice photography about the city, uh, by the way, um, this is Troy and uh, and uh, his family, I guess, maybe riding the bike in front of his house.
Steve, I don't think we're seeing the website.
So John, apparently when I, okay, sorry about that. So when I toggle in my screen, apparently it doesn't toggle on your screen, so.
We want it toggle.
You're not? Well, I am so sorry, but for some reason, apparently um, Windows or Zoom are not going to play nicely together. So let me just, let me just summarize what that is. Uh, it's a beautiful site.
Oh, wait.
Oh, wait. Okay, so I, apparently Shannon can share. I can't. So uh, we'll, we'll, so Shannon wouldn't mind just kind of scrolling down a little bit um, on the site there and, and showing the different sections. Again, uh, the photography um, that I mentioned a moment ago. And if you want to keep scrolling just briefly there, Shannon, there's a information on how folks can get involved, the three phases right there that we're going through right now. If you'd like to scroll a little bit more. Um, there's a project timeline that the general benchmarks as we move through and you, you can see it's, it's not going to be a, a quick project, but we want to do it right. So we're going to spend the time to do it properly. And then um, information about the survey and sharing the survey. And um, then down below, if you go down one more screen, uh, we've got a form for filling in. And again, we're, we are hoping that in the fall, as uh, as the vaccines roll out, uh, Rotary and Kiwanis and those types of clubs are meeting again. And that we'll be able to um, uh, both uh, go out and do onsite visits and that type of thing. If we aren't, we will continue to hold virtual open houses as we are doing presently um, with other um, projects. as we are doing presently with other projects. And let's see if I can share my screen again and get back into the presentation. So in phase two, which will be in late summer, we, we assume will be taking the major areas of interest that are identified through the survey. The survey is open-ended, so we're not forcing people to just to check checkboxes and, and select from choices. Open-ended means there's a big box there and they can just tell us whatever they want to tell us. Jason then will take all that information and spend weeks and weeks going through it and organizing it so we can properly report back what the responses were. And we anticipate, and this is what Jason's experienced, normally you'll get seven to 10 major areas that, that many, many people have commented on. And those will become the major areas that we primarily focus on. I mean, we'll, we'll address everything, but we'll want to make sure we have some priorities. And in section, or phase three, which will be in the fall, we'll actually be taking those areas of interest, re-engaging with the community. Hopefully by then, for sure, we'll be able to do some in-person things in town halls. If not, we'll just do what we're doing right now and and take those and ask folks to help us figure out both on the good side and the bad side, what an appropriate way to address those ideas or promise or issues might be. And finally, and this is also on the website, if people would like to ask more questions or assuming that we're able to do presentations again, schedule a presentation for the group or just want to talk about the survey or have questions with taking the survey or whatever. There's all that information plus a form is on available at lacycares.org, or you can certainly call Lacey Public Affairs at three six zero four one three four three eight seven, eight to five during normal business hours. Or you can email us anytime at lacycares@ci.lacy.wa.us. And we will get back to you as soon as possible and, and, and take care of your questions. So I think I'm going to pause there and stop sharing and respond to any comments or questions that.
Yeah, so just, just a curious question. First of all, this is great. I, I'm gonna spend some time looking this over and share it with people in the community that I, that I'm acquainted with. Is there a way to identify the, the actual residents of, of the people that are engaging in this site? Is there, is there any kind of identifier? I mean, could somebody from Hoquiem decide to log in and make all kinds of comments about what to do in Lacey?
So yes, Hoquiem residents are welcome to do that from anywhere. We, Jason, one of the, one of the benefits of having a highly skilled and qualified consultant is they have AI resources that can do things to figure out that, that, that IP or that respondent probably wasn't responding from Lacey. You know, Lacey, Lacey is a, is a regional shopping area. We actually have, well, it's not in Lacey, but I know people drive up from Chehalis to shop at the Winco, which is just outside of Lacey on Martin Way. We, we have a lot of draw and, and you know, while we definitely want to make sure our residents are, are a high priority on what we address and what we solicit information or opinions from. You know, folks that shop here, folks that drive in to recreate here, folks that come from out of town to use the rack. Again, when COVID is over during the big tournaments, I mean, those, those folks come from all over the Northwest. They may have impressions or ideas or suggestions that can help us create a better community for everyone. So definitely we want to, we want to hear from them. And, and Jason has assured us, as a matter of fact, I talked to Jason at about ten thirty last night, and he reassured me that none of that's going to be a problem. So I'm going to take him at his word about that. Also, and unfortunately my, something kind of hiccuped on my Zoom here, but on the survey itself, and which is a pretty important thing to bring up, at the end of the survey, the last page, after you've kind of finished up, you'll be offered an opportunity to enter a drawing for a $250 gift card, and it'll be just like one of those Visa cards you can spend wherever you want. There'll be five of those. It'll be a random drawing in late summer, early fall, somewhere in that area. Yeah, you, you will have to provide your contact information, you know, a name and a phone number and a mailing address so we can get that card to you if you're lucky enough to win one. And so you don't have to be a Lacey resident to enter or win, but you have to fill that out. So what that will do is give us an opportunity if, if folks are interested in providing information, we can, in the future, connect with them. You know, we're going to have targeted emails, that type of thing for future workshops. And so that will give us the, the beginning of developing contact information for, for staying engaged with those folks.
Councilmember Conkle, there's also going to be a follow-up phase, which will be a statistically valid survey as well. So there'll be a lot of tracking involved with that survey.
Using, oh, go ahead, Deputy Mayor, sorry.
Very quickly, how will I, can you somehow connect for me on my Facebook page so I can share it as a, on my city Facebook page?
So I'm going to say yes. On the, on the website itself, there's a share page that has all the social icons listed across the bottom. And I am not a Facebook expert, but I'm going to guess that if you click on that Facebook icon, it's going to enable you to share that page. And Shannon, are you wigging? Shannon seems to be shaking her head yes.
Okay, thank you.
And yet, any other questions?
Deputy Mayor Pratt, it'll also be on the city's Facebook page as well, so you can share through that. Okay.
Perfect. Anything else? Okay, thank you so much. Looks like a great program. Great to hear feedback and hopefully we'll get some great, great projects, some suggestions.
Absolutely. Thanks, Shannon.
Thank you. Thanks.
So the final item under the city manager report is a bid award for the Capital City Course Golf Course in West Project. So Scott Eager's going to provide background. Also for Dave Schneider's going to provide some other context to this bid process. We're going to then ask the city council to adjourn to an executive session for about 10 minutes to talk about potential litigation. So if that helps, Scott provide background on the bid process.
Good evening again. I'm going to share a screen here. So staff is recommending award of this project, which is phase two of the Capital City Golf Course Water Wastewater Project, which is PW twenty twenty dash thirty. We're recommending award to active construction in the amount of $7,724,291.57. The engineer's estimate was about 8.3 million. There were seven bidders, 260 working days in the project. And we anticipate, if all goes well, that it will begin in, in May. So again, this is phase two. This diagram shows the highlighted phase two, which is the west part of the project. The, the unhighlighted or white portion there is on the right side of your screen. That's the east. That's currently engaged in construction. And in terms of percent complete water and sewer lines are between 60 and 70% complete. Repaving is in the neighborhood of 30% complete with more paving anticipated shortly after the rain stops. And that'll take it up to about 50. So phase one will probably end sometime later this summer. And, and just to give you a little bit of side-by-side comparison of phase one and phase two. Phase one was a little bit smaller than phase two. I think what you're probably interested in, you recall that the purpose of this project are three. Number one was to replace water lines throughout Capital City. Number two was to sewer the area and connect all the folks who are on septic to sewer in order to protect our well site there. And then also we're doing a little bit of stormwater work. But in terms of the number of side sewer stubs, that's, we're stubbing to every property there, whether they're going to connect or not. There were 188 in phase one, 235 in phase two, so a total of 423. And you can see, if you look in the total column right below that, we are going to connect 411 of the 423. Those are the folks that came in and signed the power attorneys and requested to be connected. So just in terms of, you know, sewer main, water main, there's a little over two miles of sewer main in both projects. You can see 11,400 in phase one, 12,400 in phase two. Similar ratios proportions for the water main. Asphalt, 6,500 tons in phase one, 7,500 in phase two. And then in terms of construction costs, phase one was 5.9 million, phase two was 7.7 million for a total of 13.6 million in construction costs. So again, that 13.6 does not go to sewer. There's water, sewer and storm there. So with all that said, as, as the city manager noted earlier, and as noted in the staff report, the apparent low bidder was PAMF excavating. And their bid varied from the requirements of the bid invitation, therefore the city rejected their bids. With that said, I'm going to ask city attorney Dave Schneider to comment now, and I'm going to stop sharing the screen.
Thank you, Scott. And council, you'll see on your agenda, there's an expectation that we adjourn into executive session. So I'd be asking the council to adjourn into executive session at this time to discuss potential litigation.
Okay, just want to make sure everyone's received their separate Zoom code to go into executive sessions. Does everyone have that readily available?
Do we just leave this one open then while we go to the other one?
Yes, so I'm going to close this meeting, but we're going to go into the other meeting. So this, this meeting will, will show where we've gone to an executive session. So we do, we will leave this meeting and have to come back. Okay, and so I will then be exiting this council meeting and will be adjourning to an executive session for 10 minutes. Be back. Thanks. Be back, thanks. Okay. Discuss potential litigation. And now we're back to our 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 agenda item, which is uh the Capital City Gulf Course West Water. And wastewater improvement, west water and wastewater improvements for Capital City Gulf Course. Is there any more part of the staff report? Then it's uh it's been. Uh suggested and and uh by um our staff that we award the Lacy contract P W dust twenty. Twenty uh dash thirty to the low uh bidder active construction from Gulf Washington. Is there a second? Moving seconded, is there any further discussion? And seeing none, I'll bear that motion, signify by saying I. Is there any opposed? And that motion carries and we've uh awarded the bid for the Capital City Gulf Course West project to the uh low bidder.
Thank you.
Thanks Scott. But if you have anything else, city manager?
That's it, thank you.
Great, uh then we'll go to sending general committees. And the first up is the the finance development committee, um which did meet on February twenty-third. Um with several items on our agenda, um the the first um. Item was our twenty twenty-one budget amendment update. Uh there's a a staff report uh here, um we went over about some budget. Uh amendment carryovers, uh that was the second agenda item, which I won't go into. But on on this one, it just talks about several of the major amendments that that we've already are uh up against. Uh in our in our budget. And this happens every year, right? We 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 budget, uh you know, both the budget process. And then we get into the year and and sure enough, something always comes up and we have to amend the budget. Um and so we've talked a little bit about the veteran services hub. Um and uh we talked about the strategic community, uh strategic communications plan project. And that's uh has a change there. Um there's a one about the arterial street fund, which is uh the college in seventh avenue in the town, the Theshy Crossing preliminary analysis. Forty thousand. There's a a change in the building improvement fund, that's really just a category categorization. Um and uh there's several others that's laid out in this re- report. There's nothing really too major, um there is, there is a a under uh the building improvement fund. There's a a well decommissioning and soil cleanup um in the Department of Ecology, Store, um preservation assessment. Um for the Lacy Museum and Civic Center site, and so that's that's something that we knew was gonna happen. But we didn't know what the actual dollar amount was gonna be, so there's a budget amendment for that. Um and then next was the twenty twenty budget carryovers, and we just went through that with with Troy. Uh then we talked about our fourth quarter twenty twenty investment report. Um and we knew all on the committee that it probably wasn't gonna be very pretty last year. Uh we saw interest rates, you know, drop to nothing. Well, that definitely affects our our city's portfolio. Um but still, after all that, um our portfolio is is meeting our our. Projections of what we set it it need to meet, um and so that that's been good. The the problem is is we we don't see it getting that much better in the in the near future. Interest rates are gonna be near nothing for for quite a long time. Um and we did, we did see the the core uh fund portfolio yield um decrease from. One point zero four percent to point nine three percent, so I mean talking, we're getting one interest, one percent interest. And now a little bit under one percent interest, um but uh that's just the way things are going right now, but overall. Um you know, it's it's what we expect, and I think it's been still a bit a great policy um for for the city of Lacey. And then the the last thing we talked about was our our food truck court. Court proposal um for the Lacey Depot District. And this is a. Like a long conversation that we can have and a lot of history behind it. Um some of it goes back to our or a council retreat we had back in. Um you know, two thousand twelve about the the depot district and what we can do to. Um come up with a sub area plan and make that a more viable and uh you know, a nice part of our city. Um we've then had, you know, internal conversations we've had with with Rick about. Uh you know, supporting a food truck court in in Lacey. A lot of things have different have come together to um have a couple of different ideas on where this could be. We we looked at more closely towards the the um the couplet um on on. Uh the the roundabout near um call it our Carpenter Road. We've talked about that in in the past, that was, oh, uh I think in last year, uh economic development. Uh finance and development committee meeting. Um and so what we've ended up with is like, well, in in the process of coming up with a permanent food. Food court, why don't we, you know, take the the property over by the um the train depot? Right now, it's just a, you know, gravel. Parking area where you know, an open area and and start the food truck court there. And uh we also actually had an opportunity to meet our a new economic film coordinator Wesley. And he's been doing a bunch of this legwork uh about the food truck court and and reaching out to the food truck court association. And um and so we we got a a briefing on this and we were very excited. The committee is very excited to see this um this this happen. Um there's gonna, you know, hopefully have some some more amenities there with some likes later. And we're really hoping that, you know, this will be set up for this to be really successful and hopefully have a a permanent site. Um right there in in the in the the same vicinity um um going forward. But we we expect that this uh is gonna be operational, you know, in the in the next month or so. And there's a little work that is between done between now and then to get there. Um I know that uh there's been a lot of people who have been interested in this and you know, I've been reaching out to the city and. Showing some interest in in going there, and so I I think, you know, with. When this gets up and going, it's gonna be just a a great, great place where people go with the trails right there. They're gonna be able to use the the depot um as an mandy um for hopefully for some seating. And uh and so, yeah, we're really looking forward to this. But Mike, you got something real quick?
Yeah, just just really quick, and I I hope we um, yeah, I can see at the beginning re-restricting it, but. Let really let the free market take this um this over, it's 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 risk and reward and and a special balance, but. Um you know, it's a, I think if it, if we give it its its freedom, it's gonna really be successful. But we can also hamper it, it's like a like a fire, if you take away one of the, uh you know, the fuel or the or the. Ignition source or or whatever, then it slowly dies. We should just get it set up good and and let the free market take it over from there.
So anyway, uh we're, we are really excited about this, um and this has been a lot of conversations behind the scenes. But so it's great to see it finally come to hopefully fruition here this next month and look forward to its success. And so that is my report. The next up is the General Government and Public Affairs Committee.
A public safety committee, so we, whoops, so we met also February twenty-third. And we have two agenda items, um interim police chief, uh Bob Almada gave us some preliminary data. For twenty twenty and uh for instance, uh the police department responded to thirty-eight thousand seven hundred eighty-six. Incidents, which is a decrease of sixteen point seven percent. The number of DUI arrests, tickets written, fields, interviews and arrests also decreased from the previous year. The preliminary crime data for twenty twenty shows a decrease of seventeen point five percent compared to twenty nineteen. And violent crimes were down twenty-six point seven percent. And uh then also the use of force was used in less than three percent of all arrests. So it it's the department using de- uh de-escalation tactics. Um which has really been important in keeping uh the use of force down. The second item was Hicks Lake twenty twenties annual report. And um it was presented and what actions were taken for twenty twenty. Uh there was a significant progress in curbing aquatic vegetation in the lake. And also staff introduced Ken Callahan, um the newly elected president of the management district. And that's my report.
Thank you, Mayor. Um the next up is the land use committee.
Well, I can make mine very short and sweet. We also met on February twenty-third. And our entire agenda was going over the shoreline master program, which came before council tonight. So you've seen and experienced it.
Thank you. Then uh next up is the community relations and public affairs committee.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, we met up on March first at eleven uh A M, and we had a two item agenda. Uh the first was a update from Lacey Parks Cultural and Culture and Recreation Department. Um and they gave a update on uh events, activities uh that are coming up. Uh programs continue to be modified um to meet some safety requirements. Uh as the reci- as the city receives direction and guidance from the governor's office and there's some county public health. Um. To uh spring two thousand twenty-one newsletter was available, uh came out March sixteenth. With open registration um for uh starting March thirty-first for online and over the phone only. And the summer uh newsletter will be available May nineteenth. It will open up May twenty-sixth, typically running three to four weeks behind due to COVID. And um the two thousand twenty-one cultural celebration is happening, but it's virtual this year, but at least it's happening. Um it it's coming up on March twenty-seventh. Um and boost will be live for thirty days after the event. And visitors can create virtual uh boosts, mid performance records and share demonstrations about their heritage. So that's great. Um staff continues to work on multiple scenarios for some event, such as Lacey in tune and for the third of July fireworks. And our second agenda agenda item was lifeguards at Long Lake Beach. Um so parks currently only has six certified um lifeguards. Um and very few have the experience enough to uh work at Long Lake. So it continues just like two thousand twenty. Um they didn't have staff avail- available that was trained or or had the experience enough to. Um you know, properly uh. Meet the um staffing requirements of ten and a half full-time employees. Well, um and training continues to be a huge uh uh obstacle due to COVID. So um the they will not be lifeguards at the the um beach this year again. But um just like last year, we'll have the police department there at peak hours. Um and that is my report. I think I I will say that last year I was there several times, a couple of times fishing, a couple of times. Uh playing volleyball with my with my daughter and and just visiting friends. And I saw no issues whatsoever, um people were still enjoying the park and being responsible for. Um you know, so social distancing and and all that stuff, so. You know, it's an amenity amenity we still have and enjoy, uh and we're doing it responsibly as we can, so. That's my report.
Thanks, um transportation committee.
Okay, uh council member Miller, do you want me to take this one or do you wanna?
Yeah, that was your, it's your your last last one.
My my swan song is chair. So we met on March second and uh we unanimously elected council member Miller. To chair the transportation committee. They decided to let me steer that one meeting, but uh I'm very happy to be handing the gavel over to Malcolm. Um. Uh one order of businesses that we uh agreed to change our meeting time. It will still be on the first Tuesday, but it'll start at eleven instead of noon. And this was mainly to try to help, you know, staff not have to work through their lunch hour. And that was approved and seconded. Um. We also worked on the uh Martin Way signal prioritization. Uh issue which we heard about tonight, as well as the inter- inner-city transit, inter-local agreement on this. We got a presentation from Scott Edgar on a adopt a highway cleanup program. Um currently, the cleanup operations have been suspended because of COVID and. All but businesses and groups can hire state-approved contractors to pick up litter on their. Adopt a highway section under the process, so it's not entirely idle. Um we also. Got an update from Aubrey Collier on the twenty twenty-one plans for city paving. Um. Carpenter Road overlay uh is one of the biggies there. There'll be overlays also on Orion Drive, Mar- Marvin Road and Willamette Drive in northeast Lacey and Fran Street. And there are a number that are scheduled for the slurry seal uh treatment as well. So total cost for all of those projects is four point four million. And that's my report on transportation. And next time, Mr. Miller, it'll be yours.
Great, thank you. So now we're on to um boards, commissions and committee reports on the first. And uh first off, I talked about the mayor's forum, which meets the first Friday of every month. And um this last month, we had a couple of different conversations that um. Were going around between the the mayors and um the the first one was, of course, uh something that we talked about. In a work session here was a a letter received um um from the non- In a work session here was a a letter received um um from the nonprofits inviting us to. Be a part of uh a um a formal um conversation. Um I I reported out our work session that uh according to the, you know, mayors who were who were there. That they were all going to um. Um that you know, write a letter back uh talking about some of the things that they're they're doing, but that there wasn't being a. An official representative for for the city and that maybe individual council members were gonna attend to that. Um and then the other issue that we um we talked about is that, you know, the city of Lacey hasn't been the only. City that's been approached about the the hazard pay question um for our uh groceries, uh grocery stores and. Um it from that to that same conversation, one that one of the things that was was brought up and um I know this is a question that gets asked quite a bit. Um is is how how is Seattle able to do this and and is there anything difference between Seattle and say Thurston? County and it it, you know, through just the the conversation we had with the mayors. Um it didn't sound like any of the jurisdictions um in Thurston County was going to. Uh you know, pass an ordinance and it and the the conversation had to go specifically with. Um the inability to be able to enforce such a um a an ordinance, right? Seattle in has their own taxing authority up there and their own audit um capabilities. Uh we belong to the the state system, which is a completely different system. And so there's 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 no way for for us here in in Thurston County to have an enforcement mechanism. Of of such an ordinance, so you'd have to create a whole new division uh to do that. And so uh this is some of the conversation we we were the mayors were having. Um a around this discussion, we are all very uh of course sympathetic for um there's a lot of people who've been on the front lines. Of course, of COVID this past year and um it's been really difficult on on a lot of people. Um and you know, the other question that has did come did come up is uh you know, there's this. Uh seems to be a a question, um a union question that's going on. Um as well, and and so it's uh you know, the mayors were at the time um very wary to get in the middle of a. Come a discussion that's going on uh between employees and employers of of the union in this particular circumstance. And so um that was just, you know, some of the conversations we're having at the mayor's forum. Uh Deputy Mayor?
Well, the other thing that and it's not appropriate to uh talk to the people as they're commenting, but. The they now are able to get their vaccines and um. It seems to me that that's more appropriate to prevent them getting ill than having. Um even a few dollars more um to be able to pay their rent or anything. If they get ill, they can't won't be able to work. So it seems to me that the fact that they're now allowed to get their vaccines. Should be encouraged that they do so, and I understand that this today that maybe even restaurant. Employees uh get to have vaccines as well. No, I I'm not positive about that.
Yeah, anyone in the in the food service side of things um are now eligible for for the vaccine. Uh that's that. That is true and that's that's good information to put out to the public. So you know, the the other quick conversation we had with the mayors specifically or that is there's there's a. It's really difficult to pick, you know, when there's and there's there's a lot of frontline people, right? Um in in our communities. Uh and so uh you know, there was. That the doesn't really matter because I like I said, I don't think we have we'd have authority to enforce such an uh an ordinance, so at this point, it's. It's a little just a a conversation to be to be had, but um. You know, that that was a couple of things that we were talking about at the mayor's forum, and so that is. Uh my report and then um the Transportation Policy Board. Uh met bright and early on March tenth at seven AM. Um uh a couple of items that we had on our agenda. As a we had a an update of the um twenty twenty two unified planning work program. Um so uh this really sort of uh articulates how certain state federal funding. Will be used for transportation planning. Um and they gave an overview of this uh uh program. Um documents. Um there were some questions from the Transportation Policy Board members about. Uh due dates on some of the projects and and programs and um there was a a clarification on the on the freight mobility. Um side of things that that includes uh local deliveries. And then there is a there's a question about uh on the a micro mobility project as well. Then we talked about our uh Transportation Policy Board bylaws uh for terms of office. This is a. A question that come that came up in in a prior meeting. You know, there's a there's a difference in the bylaws to the Transportation Policy Board. And that Thurston Regional Planning at full council, and so there's some clarifying questions that that came out of that. Um and I think we will look at a a couple uh different things uh going forward than how we how we've always done it. Um but a lot of the question really had to do with it maybe possibly adding a second vice chair position. Because there there's just so much that goes on on the Transportation Policy Board, you know, and there's a lot of planning that happens. Um behind the scenes and I I put forward that it would be great to maybe have a a a third voice. Uh from the from the Transportation Policy Board um in on those discussions and I so I think that's. Something that's gonna be recommended recommended at our next meeting. And then the other thing that we have different Transportation Policy Board um than we do at the full council. Is we have an emeritus representative position available and so um. You know, there's when we talk about transportation planning in particular, these are these um sometimes go over. Many, many years of of planning and there we've had actually a couple of people who've been on the Transportation Policy Board for. For over a decade and one was a a business representative, Doug DeForest, and so we um we're we're looking at this and. Um we actually decided to just uh and it was a business and um emeritus position. We're we're gonna. The the suggestion is is to get rid of um the the reference business or or community and just talk about emeritus position, so anyone. Who has served, you know, at least ten years on on the policy board could apply to uh be in that position and. With having no more than two of them on on the policy board. And so the but the the last part of our um agenda, which we spent the most of time on. Was uh integrating equity into our transition uh decision-making. And so this is uh really came out of a um uh a our last uh retreats. Um and so staff uh presented a proposed draft policy that may be considered at the next. Update of the regional transportation plan. The presentation included uh data to illustrate some of the different priorities for how the transportation system works across uh demographic sectors. And then our members discussed assessing needs, measuring progress and and they gained impacts. And so that took up uh the majority of our time and ran out of time and we didn't get to our legislative update. Uh but at the time, you know, it was the fifty ninth day of uh fifty ninth day of the hundred and five day session, so. Um we're going pretty quick on on this session. Um and that is my report and I'll turn over to the Deputy Mayor.
So Lot met uh March tenth in the evening and there was no work session this time. Uh hearing was conducted for surplus equipment as designated by our state law and. After the hearing in which nobody testified, the surplus equipment was approved in the consent agenda. Uh to be disposed of in any legal way beneficial to Lot. We had an update on Lot's pre-treatment program, which regulates fog, which stands for fat, oils and grease. Um in order to protect treatment processes and biosolids quality. Lot and its par- partner jurisdictions, including Lacey, are required by the Department of Ecology to implement. A pre-treatment program to control industrial discharges. And uh to implement the program successfully, Lot must ensure that its discharge regulations are adequate. Be able to locate new sources of discharge and control discharges by industrial users. Through permit or other legal enforcement control mechanisms. And of course, during twenty twenty. Um it was really difficult to go onsite to check if businesses uh uh that produce fog are compliant. And a protocol was set up to achieve the required oversight for the program while making sure inspectors remain safe. Uh we also had an update of the Biological Process Improvement Project. And construction began in January twenty twenty one and is currently in phase one of three. Um staff provided an update on project construction activities. The as you probably remember, the Biological Process Improvements Project. Optimizes the butt inlet treatment plan's current biological treatment process by. Reconfiguring the existing first aeration basins and making targeted infrastructure upgrades. The project replaces aging equipment, enhances operational control and flexibility. And increases process reliability. The project optimizes biological treatment tank space. And definitely reduces the energy required for treatment, which is significant, so they're saving a lot of money by doing that. Uh over the long run. And then lastly, for Lot, the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada awarded Lot. The Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Finance Reporting for Lot's twenty nineteen annual financial report. And this is the thirteenth year they have won the award for financial reporting. Um next up is the Olympic Region Clean Air Agency, which met in the morning of March tenth. Uh five items. February's air quality statistics showed that Thurston County had a full twenty eight days of good air quality. Ecology will use Lacey's monitoring site to test components of different compounds such as ethylene oxide. As a pilot study to see if those air compounds show up in our air. Uh Orca's Education and Outreach Program is looking for funding again. With Ecology for the Woodstove Replacement Program. And uh outdoor burning um they uh burning permits are ramping up for this month. I had said burning, burning, but that is not what I meant. Um and lastly, Orca's budget versus actables are pretty on target. At eight months into their fiscal season, the revenue is seventy eight percent and the expenses are sixty seven percent, so. Uh we're in good financial um uh sit a good financial si- situation for our Orca. And that is my report.
Councilmember Cox.
Righty. First report is on the Regional Housing Council, which met this afternoon. I think the item probably of most interest to my seatmates on the city council here is that we agreed. To change the time of the Regional Housing Council meetings to. Four o'clock on the fourth Wednesday of the month, and so I'm hoping, Scott, that that means our. Third Thursday council meeting can start at four.
That's correct.
All right, so.
Goodness, it's nine o'clock. I'm about ready to go to sleep.
I know.
Yeah.
It's past my bedtime already. It's.
All right, so that was a major accomplishment to try to get all those entities in one place at. One time again, but we managed it. Um we also had um an in-depth report. From the Thurston Regional Hou- Planning Council on the housing needs assessment and action plan. Um that's gonna be coming before us as a full council as we develop Lacey's own plan. Uh each entity that is part of this process probably will have a little bit different look. But it's all aimed at trying to see on a regional basis that we are getting. Policy and strategies in place to meet the housing needs of our area. Um one alarming statistic in there shows that by twenty forty five, one of every two. New residents is gonna be low income. So and and you'll see throughout this report, we're gonna be getting and it this is all available now on the. Regional Planning Council website uh that the need, I mean, there's a a need for housing period. But the low-income affordable housing is a critical need. And so it's gonna be our challenge to find ways to make that happen in Lacey. Um, let's see. Uh we also got a report on the safe parking scan for uh people who are living in cars and RVs. And that is moving along nicely and. We'll let that one go for now on there. Minutes uh will be up probably in a few weeks on the. Um county health department's website, which has a page for the regional hu- housing council, so all of that. Will be in there. And I wanted to report briefly on the um intercity transit meeting. That occurred on March second, I believe it was. Um big news there is that. Starting this this Sunday, the twenty first, they're going to be starting to bring back. Some of the service levels that had to be so um greatly reduced uh due to COVID. They're working closely with the county health department to make sure we're doing this safely, but they've chosen. One, two, three, four, five routes that are gonna be increased frequency of stops from. Every once an hour to every half hour. And as you might expect, those are some of the most frequently traveled routes. That's twelve, forty one, sixty five, sixty six. And sixty eight. So those will have added trips. They're also going to be increasing the span of service, so it'll start. Earlier in the morning and run later in the evening, which is gonna be nice. I think morning starts about. An hour and a half sooner and evening will end thirty minutes to one hour later than they do now. And all of these changes are designed to ease congestion on busy routes. To provide trips during busy commute hours and to add physical distancing of passengers while they're on board. Additionally, they're going to be um doing some schedule adjustments to try to keep buses moving well during travel hours. On routes sixty two A and B, which is essentially Martin Way. So. I I think this is a big step. There's gonna obviously a long way to build back from where we were. A little over a year ago, but it's progress, and that's my report.
Uh Councilmember Greenson.
All right, I have two reports tonight. I will keep them both very brief. So uh TCOM nine one one met on March third. Uh just a couple of things of importance there. One, uh work is ongoing on the radio system. The uh site work has started on this on the actual tower sites, so that work is underway. Um passed a resolution for the purchase of the subscriber equipment, so all of the radios and everything for the police and fire. Uh the the initial radios for all all departments will be purchased by TCOM for the new system, so that that was approved. Um and then lastly, I was re-elected as chair of TCOM. And Leada Delhoff from Kumwater was elected was re-elected as the vice chair. And then yesterday, March seventeenth, EMS Medic One met and just a couple of things there. Um. Again, we had officer elections and Margaret McPhee, who has been the on the on the board for over twenty years and the chair for, I believe, the last fourteen years. Uh decided to step down as chair uh due to some other issues and. Stan Moon, who has been her vice chair, was elected chair and I was elected as vice chair of uh EMS Medic One. Other than that, we um. Discuss the Levy lid lift, which will be coming up on the August ballot. There'll be a four on four thirteen, the county commission will be holding a public hearing on that topic for anyone that's interested. And that is my report.
Thank you. I knew that was coming up for sure. Um Councilmember Miller.
Oh, yeah, uh Thurston County uh TRPC met on March fifth. Uh only a couple of agenda items and the mo- the one of most note is the shortage of uh sidewalks. That we have in Thurston County. Uh it looks like we're in need of about two hundred and thirty-three miles where the sidewalks, we. Have a lot of roads that have, you know. Have a lot of roads that have, you know, sidewalks on one side or no sidewalks at all. Twenty-one percent have sidewalks only only on one side, and more than fifty percent of arterials and collectors are missing sidewalks altogether. Uh, or on one side, and then thirty-four percent that just don't have any, so. Uh, the funds that are gonna be needed to do this are are in excess of uh two hundred and thirty-three million. Uh, so, you know, funding sources are. Uh, in some cases in short supply, so it's not gonna happen all at once, uh, but the goal is to. You know, get uh acquire more funding sources, apply for more grants that are going to help us. Um, you know, kind of fill in the gaps um in in solving some of this stuff. Some of the outlying areas, um, will get some priorities because we've already made decisions that allow for them to move forward in some of the. Dakota and Tenino and uh these places, uh, but that was our main takeaway from that meeting, I'll be able to brief you a little bit more as we. Dive in a little deeper on that one. Uh, Thurston Drives met on Monday uh of this week. Um, over the past five months, uh, Thurston Drives has been trying to discern um where our equity gaps are really located at. And uh, you know, uh, we we've discussed things like disparity uh in health. Uh, especially the healthcare system, uh, when put out an equity awareness survey. And uh have come up with some, most recently some health equity. Uh, indicators uh that we will be moving forward on, some of those I spoke about in my last brief. When I briefed on this last month, um, but we have things like infant mortality rate, uh, depression. Uh, fair and poor health, and so uh we'll be using these as key indicators. Uh, moving forward, uh, and units of progress. Uh, that that will be able to say, hey, we're we're moving in this direction, now we need to. Uh, make sure that uh things happen in this vein, for example. Uh, the infant mortality route rates uh by race are double when you get to uh. You know, black mothers and babies, and so they die at uh twice the rate of anybody else. And uh, you know, uh, I was able to share some of the studies that I know about. Um, where uh, uh, studies that have shown that, you know. The more black doctors that are involved, the more black teachers that are involved, the the better the outcome seems to be. Um, in in those situations, and so uh we'll be moving in that direction. Uh, and some of the other things were premature births. Um, depression, uh, the depression is measured among eighth graders. Uh, and the fair and poorth- poor health uh are measured among adults, so. Um, these are gonna be the key indicators in in the pro- the progress matrix. Matrix that will be uh following to uh discern whether we're having any impact in the community. And so I'll be able to brief more on that um as we move forward and start mobilizing uh efforts to to reduce those numbers. And that is Mayor Ward.
Thank you. Councilor, Councilmember Seddon.
Um, neither one of my committees met since the last time we have, but I will have a report for you next. Uh, we'll have a meeting next week, so next the council meeting, I'll have a report, so no report for me.
And Councilmember Cunkel.
The uh VCB Board met March sixteenth, uh, the custom of the meeting was. Uh, be interviewing a new CEO very soon. Uh, our hiring committee has narrowed the candidates down to four, and we were informed that our interim leader Jeff Bo. Is unfortunately no longer in consideration. And we should be narrowing things down soon and uh have a new CEO for our VCB. Uh, for the Lacey South Sound Chamber, March third was the forum. Our city manager Scott was a guest speaker and covered our state of the city. Uh, for the Economic Development Council, the board met on February twenty-fourth. Uh, focus of the meeting was an overview of the policy and legislative issues that impact economic development in Thurston County. We had a discussion with the Washington Economic Development Association with uh three themes. Strengthening the economic development ecosystem, fostering catalysts for job recovery and growth. And increasing prosperity. We also covered our shared legislative agenda for Thurston County with the uh Thurston County Chamber and had a brief discussion. With Congresswoman Marilyn Strickland, and that is my report.
Oh, uh, Councilmember Cox.
No, we're all ready to go home, but I would like to just make a quick statement. We've heard now uh in back-to-back meetings from grocery workers who have not been in a very enviable. Space, and I know the supplies workers throughout. One thing that that really bothers me um is first that we didn't, we weren't aware of this until. You know, for as we're starting to come out of this pandemic, but I don't think this is going to be the end of COVID. And I don't think this is gonna be the only rodeo with pandemics, and so I would like to schedule some time. At 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 a workshop coming up soon to take a look at this issue and. You know, what the city realistically can do, and sometimes, yeah, maybe we can't enforce an ordinance. But we can, we have the bully bull pulpit here, and we can set a community example. So if you all are are willing to discuss this, that I I would love to pay some time at a study session to talk about it. Uh, on a big picture basis.
Councilmember Cunkel.
Um, I don't believe that it's our place to intervene in that situation. I understand that uh we have some workers that are upset, that are concerned. Uh, but I don't think it's the business of our city to be a bully pulpit for one group over another. And I would suggest that we stay out of that issue.
Well, um, what I would, what I would suggest is that we understand our 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 legal ob- obligation or what we legally can and can't do. I think it's it's, that is an appropriate conversation, and and it should be a conversation that. And we have to s- to se- you know, to settle this, you know, cause right now. That conversation we had at mayor's forum was just our interpretation, it was just our mayor's talking. I I didn't, I haven't gotten a legal opinion on that, it was just the consensus of the majority of the mayors at at the time. Interpretation of what we can and cannot do, and so um at at uh, you know. Um, at some point, we can have a discussion, what's the, you know, what is the major differences between our former government? Um, and say what happened in Seattle, and I I think that's an appropriate conversation um going forward, uh. Just understand where we legally stand, and so um, Deputy Mayor, do you have something real quick?
Only that I I agree, I think it would be good to know our legal stance, um, I mean, I understand. The issue of, I mean. In the future, there may be another pandemic that it doesn't get covered by vaccine, so. There is that issue of hazard pay, but but I do think i- it's more complex. Than what the grocery uh staff is saying and. Others are saying and stuff, so it it would help to have a a a good discussion around it regardless, in my opinion.
So, we can uh, I'll talk with the city manager and we'll wait, maybe figure out the future date for that. Councilmember Seddon, you have something real quick?
Yes, in regards to the VCB, um, you know, I sat on that board before as well as yourself, Mr. Mayor, and. I was in the process last time when they were selecting a new ED, and I felt. One demographic that was underserved in the applicants was military veterans in prior service, uh, you know. Whatever form, you know, reservists, whatever. Out of sixty-two applicants, there was one person that had military experience, and in my opinion, next. Maybe equivocally to a business person, no one travels more than the military, um, so uh I would. Oh, you know, it's late in the game, there's only four applicants left, hopefully one of them has some some of that experience, um, but. Um, that was. Thing I voiced uh. Be during that process, proper attention it deserved, um, so hopefully they eradicated, uh, you you know, corrected that uh in this process, so. I just needed to say that, um, because it's, you know, I remember it like it was yesterday.
I would also like to say, I hope they evaluated a diverse group of people rather than just. The obvious.
Well, I mean, the 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 last one that was selected was a a a woman, so I mean, that was a good, a good thing, so.
Okay, it's, I'm sorry, I'm cutting off, it's late. I'm looking forward to going back to four o'clock, but uh, you know, I appreciate the conversations and um, you know, and. I appreciate all of you, and we've let reached the end of our agenda, and so until next time. I'm gonna call this meeting adjourned, and as always, keep it classy, Lacey, we'll see you.
Right, thanks, good night.
Night.